Good evening. The June 12, 2025 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let's kick it off right. Won't you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. By way of roll call, trustee Ratan had a family event this evening.
She's calling in.
Oh, she's calling in?
Yes.
Is she here?
I don't know if she's on yet.
Okay. Had a family event this evening, certainly we want her to enjoy the time with her family. I believe she's going to call in later. So everyone else is here?
She's here.
She's on. Okay. And I look at the ceiling again, because I always do. So we have everybody in attendance. Trustee Hamel.
He was here. He's here.
Is here, because I just saw him.
Yes.
So he'll be in shortly, I would anticipate. Okay. For our first order of business, I want to entertain a motion to make a modification to the agenda. And specifically, I'd like to entertain a motion to move the executive session of the agenda, which is now at item 12, up in the meeting to directly following the president's recommendations for action, so between item 8 and item 9, new business. And so that puts the executive session between the president's recommendation for action and the new business. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero, and with that, we will modify the agenda as adopted. And with that, next item on the agenda is awards and recognitions. As is typical in the summertime, we don't always get to see our wonderful students, and so we don't have anything this evening to take up there. That brings us to the open forum section of our meeting. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting, and comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. It's my understanding there are no registered speakers at tonight's meeting? And so that will conclude the open forum section of the board. We're whizzing right along, but don't get excited, because it's going to slow down here in a little bit. Next up is the report from our college lobbyist and the wonderful Dick Carter, and I'm sure you have some exciting things to tell us. It's summer break for you too, right?
Did you say exciting things?
Yeah. I did.
I don't know if I have exciting things or not. I would say that the process at the State House has not gotten started in earnest yet for interim committees, although interim committees have been appointed. Those calendared meetings don't really start until after July, and for the most part, really the fall is when a lot of that business occurs. And so very quiet right now at the State House. I would start, and I frequently report on the receipts to the state, they're up 31% over expectations. Again, that takes into account that January 1 started the new tax year, or the new tax bill, and so there were a lot of projections that revenues would continue to go down because adjustments have already been made in what the state expects to receive. We'll continue to watch that. There are still concerns in FY '28, '27 possibly, where we start seeing some of those revenues go into the red for the state based on expenditures. But we're also hearing that, and I'll talk a little bit later, that the leadership wants to continue to cut the budget at the state level as well. So we'll see what happens as the legislative budget committees start meeting over the course of the summer. Also some change in Topeka. A couple of legislators have been appointed to some Washington DC posts. Representative Patrick Penn out of Wichita and Senator J.R. Clayes out of Salina are both joining a number of Kansans at the USDA for different roles, and that creates some vacancies in the legislative process. Steve Brunk was a former House of Representatives member, was selected by the Central Committee in Wichita to fill the role for Representative Penn. And Monday evening in Salina, there will be another precinct committee man, committee woman, meeting to elect the replacement for Senator Clayes. In other news, just this morning, our own senator, Cindy Holsher, announced that she plans to run for governor on the Democrat ticket for Kansas. We think there'll be a few others that make that same announcement in the not-too-distant future, and she'll be running, of course, over the course of the summer, visiting places all over the state. Depending on how things go in August, there are 10 folks on the GOP side that have indicated an interest, and so it's going to be an interesting, it's going to be an interesting next year and a half to watch how things unfold as people continue to position for the top spot in Kansas politics. With regard to governance and oversight or coordination as we see it, Regent John Rolfe submitted his resignation yesterday or the day before from his seat on the Board of Regents. He was recently reappointed and has been the chair in the past. His term goes through 2027, so we'll be waiting to see what the governor does as far as an appointment is concerned to fill that spot. We also know that Regent Ice and Regent Winter probably will not be, or not seeking or will not be reappointed. So things will change at the Board of Regents as far as those sitting around the table are concerned. How that plays out and what that timeline looks like is still a little bit up in the air. Still looking at a lot of issues going on in Washington DC. Things have slowed down a little bit. Last month, when I was talking to you, there was grave concern about the speed at which things were moving through the House and as they got over to the Senate. I would say that cooler heads are prevailing, and folks are beginning to take a look at some of the impact and the serious nature of what some of the proposals look like on both sides of the aisle. And so things have slowed down a little bit. The Senate, we're still seeing movement, making sure that there are positive returns on investment for those students that are receiving financial aid. Those are some of the proposals that we're now starting to see versus some of the more concerning cutting type proposals, whether it's Pell or whether it's student aid. And the other thing that I think that is important, especially for institutions, is I believe that that risk sharing component that would come back on the college for students that are not successful completers is not part of the current discussion. And so that's very helpful as far as when we talk about student aid goes. I think that's a good place to stop. It's a fairly brief report this evening. Like I said, not a lot happening in Topeka right now, but we know that we'll be watching very closely as the budget conversations start to kick off later on this summer. Let's see if there's any questions, if I'm able to answer.
Thank you for your report, Dick. Any questions for Mr. Carter? It'll be interesting to see as we watch the changeover at the Board of Regents, how that affects philosophically some of the stuff that we see coming out of there.
Absolutely.
So we'll keep a close eye on that for sure.
Absolutely.
Thanks for keeping us up to date. All right.
Thank you.
Safe travels back to Topeka.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our report from College Counsel and Mr. Jason Arnett.
I have a kind of substantial report, but I'll try to make it sing. So we'll go from there. I'm not singing, but we're going to go there.
Oh, come on. Add a little lemmity.
College Council met yesterday. No. College Council did meet yesterday, and we heard updates from all our representatives. Counseling, as usual, is ramping up as students are beginning to enroll for fall in there. And we found out they're dealing with some technology challenges that other schools are also experiencing, maddening and frustrating, but it's not just us, which is good. Academic Branch Council updated their bylaws in their last meeting in April for the school year, and that determined their representation to College Counsel. We learned that plans for Dr. Mix's transition to JCCC are in progress, and that he's had some get-to-know-you meetings with his direct reports ahead of his arrival. Staff Council's been clearing items that come in through their submission portal, all of which are taken very seriously, and each gets a response of some kind. One of those items inspired a lengthy discussion that led to a robust back-and-forth about windows and communication, so stay tuned for how that works out. And then I'm pleased to announce that elections for Staff Council were concluded on Tuesday, and Amy Edsall from Campus Services, Facilities Planning, along with Betsy Tim from Athletics, were reelected to a full three-year term. And then we had new members, Braden Suffield from the Police Department, Jody Dietz from Academic Affairs, Lori Schenk from Academic Affairs, Gerardo Ruiz from Enrollment Services, and Anthony Fanari from College Advancement and Government Affairs. And so these new voices are most welcome to shared governance at JCCC. So we finally got to our agenda, and at the heart of the agenda were changes to our bylaws. And in summary, those changes are that the leadership structure will continue to be headed by two co-chairs, and a secretary position has been defined, so it can be filled. We'll have elections for that next month. College Counsel utilized an in-person note taker for some time, which is very, very handy. It's how I can get the report to you the day after we do things. And then that person will be appointed by the co-chairs. All votes require 51% of the total council, which is eight people, in order to pass, which constitutes our quorum. Items are then brought to College Counsel through a bunch of channels, including the co-chairs, things that come up from other councils, and sitting members can bring stuff to us, and we can discuss whether we need to do anything about it or send it out to someone else. The updated bylaws will be uploaded to our Info Hub site in the next week for everyone to read at their leisure. And great, next thing. We discussed, the last thing we did was, we discussed how to strengthen shared governance further in the coming year, and there were several suggestions that were received positively, including better communication through Info Hub and a continued presence during professional learning days. And then the last thing I have for you is, I've learned never to say never. Judy taught me that.
Exactly.
But the last thing I have is that this is most likely my final update as co-chair of College Counsel. I'm not standing for reelection in July, and I'll step down from all my shared governance roles after that meeting. While I've been on College Counsel, we've worked with two presidents, four members of the Board of Trustees, our steadfast Cabinet Representative, Elisa Waldman, and several distinguished members of our faculty and staff. I'm going to call out some names here of Dr. Ty Edwards, Dr. Barry J. Bailey, excuse me, my voice is really dry, and Dr. Jamie Cunningham, who have all served as Chair of Academic Branch Counsel. I'm choking up, I'm sorry. Forgive me. They've all served as Chair of Academic Branch Counsel. And Dr. Leslie Quinn, Jeff Hoyer, Caitlin Crumsick, Dr. Ed Lovett have all served as Chair of Staff Council in that time. Ann Turney is going to be in that chair next month alongside Dr. Cunningham and my successor. I'm grateful to them and to you all for your support and patience as I grew into this role. I should point out that though many of these individuals have doctorates, that's not a requirement to serve in shared governance. All that's required is an interest in listening and the ability to make reasonable connections. It's been my experience that leadership comes from a desire to learn and a commitment to growth over time. I encourage everyone, everyone who has an interest in pursuing an opportunity to be part of shared governance to do so. You'll develop a lot of leadership skills in the bargain, so. Trying to finish strong. One of the best things about this job has been coming to understand how the college works at so many levels. The one thing that's better than that is getting to interact with all the wonderful people who make all the really great things happen every day. I would never have met so many of those people in my day job in dining, so I'm grateful to have had that chance to work with a lot of them. So many of those folks could serve on a council, a committee, or a task force and really contribute to the betterment of the college, and I hope they will. So I see how shared governance is essential to a welcoming environment at the college, and it's best when there are a number of voices and opportunities for others to step into leadership roles. Because shared governance is most effective when a variety of voices are heard during the decision-making process, it's important to ensure that as leaders, we're listening and asking questions in response. I'm confident that my colleagues among the councils have laid a strong foundation for the future of shared governance here at the college, and I'm really excited to see what's next. The new co-chairs of College Counsel, our new president, whoever's elected next month, can always count on my support. And I'm going to stop there. So thank you very much.
That was a wonderful report. I'll open it up for questions and comments, and we'll start with trustee Jennings.
I just have a comment, Jason. I just want to thank you. I've not known you long, I'm new on the council, but you've done an amazing job, and you're just positive, and you're humble, and you're well-spoken, and you run a meeting that's actually kind of fun. Because you make it fun. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jason, I want to thank you for your time. As you said, growing into the role here with us has been a great addition from this standpoint up here. I think it really represents a perspective that has been lacking, and I've been really grateful. I think you really represent what we want from your council, which is our staff that are our typical staff who are not involved in the academics per se, but all of the other things that our students are involved in that are so critical to their success. And you have led with such great humor and curiosity, and have really shown the perspective that I think we've all benefited from here at the DIASS. And I hope that others following you do feel like they can participate in those same roles and on the councils so that their voices are heard, and it doesn't take a PhD, and it doesn't take a certain, I don't know, criteria, certificate, degree, whatever. Because your voice is critical to making this place the best place that it can be. And I appreciate all you've done to do that from your standpoint, so thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Trustee Hamel.
I want to reiterate everything that was really said, and I could reiterate the same thing, but I want to say what I've enjoyed most about you, and I got a chance to serve on council with you as well, is you really focus on real communication, not lecturing or telling people what it's supposed to be, but really bringing people together, create unity with what your message has been, and that's been great to see. I hope that the council continues that, and I'm sure it will. So thank you for that, building that legacy that way, too.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions?
I have something to convey to you from trustee Ratan.
Oh.
She wants you to know that she enjoyed the short time that she was on College Counsel with you, and wanted to let you know that your leadership and ability to include everyone is absolutely exemplary. And, you know, I would add that, I was speaking to a group of new managers earlier this week, and I made the comment that we've all heard, I'm sure, so many times before, and that is supervisors are taught, but leaders are born. And you are one of those people who, just the way that you interact with people, have the ability to make change for good, to get people to listen to different perspectives. I don't know that I've ever seen you get crosswise with anybody, because you have such an ability to just agree to disagree, and then try to quietly make changes in the way that you think is best. We're going to miss you in this role. I can tell that in some ways it's difficult for you to step down, and I admire the fact that you perceive that maybe somebody else needs to bring their voice to the table.
Yeah.
So thank you for that, and thank you for all that you've done.
Absolutely.
We'll miss hearing from you for sure.
Yeah. I'm not leaving the college. I'm just stepping back.
I know. All right. Thank you.
You do the most critical stuff, which is feeding people, right?
Yeah, you do feed everybody, so there's that.
And just to be clear, if I may, some of us don't talk so we can get through the meeting. Appreciate you.
All right. Great. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Faculty Association Report, and Irene Olivares.
Sad that Jason just left, because I was going to echo what everyone said. I've only had a short time with him on College Counsel, and I can certainly see what everyone comments about his leadership. I also want to thank Dr. Korbe for your leadership as interim president. I have personally learned a lot from your leadership, being in meetings with you, how you treat everyone with great respect and show great dignity in this position. And one of your, I think, your greatest qualities that I've seen is that you proactively communicate. So I've learned so much from you, and thank you for your service to the college and your leadership.
Thank you.
In my report today, I want to reflect on JCCC's commencement ceremonies and reintroduce myself to the board now that I'm officially stepping into the role of FA president. JCCC's commencement celebrations are always inspiring. From early May, JCCC began to welcome graduates for various ceremonies. I park in the Midwest Trust Center, and this time around, I noticed that the college had literally rolled out the red carpet for people coming into the building, and they're more like red mats, but I think the sentiment still remains. This red carpet welcomed students who were celebrated in MTC's Yardley Hall during special commencement and pinning ceremonies. It also welcomed students and families of nearby high schools that held their graduations in Yardley Hall. All month long, the campus buzzed with these celebrations. This excitement was even extended to JCCC's Hurstiner Child Development Center, where young minds of Johnson County celebrated their transition to kindergarten with little mini caps and gowns. So if you haven't seen those photos, I encourage you to look them up when you're feeling like this was a rough day. May 23 was the day that most of our students had been waiting for. On that day, students shined as they walked across the stage to receive their degrees during the two major ceremonies. At the ceremonies, former trustee Greg Musoul delivered an inspirational speech that reminded us about the value of public education and the importance of creating an inclusive environment for our members of our community as they cultivate and achieve their personal and professional goals through our education programs. I commend him for his courage in pointing out the importance of inclusion in education. It was a truly very inspirational, very moving speech. I'll finish again by reintroducing myself to the board. I do this so that you can get to know the perspectives I bring in my role as FA president and to the conversations I have with board members and with college administrators. I started my academic journey at a community college in Phoenix, Arizona. I was a first-generation college student. I was a Pell recipient. As a first-gen student, that means my parents don't have a college degree. My father has a sixth-grade education. My mother did not have any formal education. She taught herself how to read and write by examining brand names on food boxes. As a first-generation college student, I relied on my community college counselors to guide me through every step of the process. From this background, I knew that, or I know that everything that it takes for a student to graduate. I know that it takes an entire campus working together to graduate a student. My counselors helped me navigate the FAFSA, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid. They explained to me the importance of refiling every year to remain eligible. Also, being new to college and not being able to ask my parents about what the college experience is like, I remember being scared to even go into the library, right? Do I need a special keyword to get in there? Do I need a special card to access the library, to access the computer lab? But the college librarians made me feel welcomed and introduced me to the treasure trove that was the library. I spent most of my free time on campus in the library. It was my hangout spot. And it was also my history professor, Dr. Pete Dimas, who sparked my passion for history. And it was ultimately him who gave purpose to why I was on campus in the first place, right? We know, or at least at that point, I was like, okay, I think I need to go to college, but what do I do? And so the role that faculty play in inspiring that passion and to continue, very instrumental. I'll fast forward to my first role out of graduate school. I was Washburn University's inaugural first-generation student retention specialist. In that role, I helped launch several initiatives on campus, including writing a family newsletter in English and Spanish that explained college terms and processes. I was really writing that newsletter to my parents, in a way. In that role, I also served in recruitment. I remember the importance of sitting with family members during a new student orientation dinner and just answering their questions. They didn't know how much their students were going to spend on homework as a college student. So it was really an inspiring lessons that I learned in that role. I later served as an academic advisor for Trio Student Support Services, which is a federally funded program that serves students who are first-generation of college, low-income, or students with documented disabilities. One of the experiences as a Trio professional that most shaped my role in higher ed was working with students that had aged out of the foster care system. And I remember in particular one student and helping them try to get a school ID when they had lost their state-issued ID shortly after aging out of foster care, right? So trying to process, how do we get a state ID, a school ID? In order to do that, you need to acquire your Kansas birth certificate, but to do that, you need an ID to get your birth certificate. So it was a very circular process, and it could have become very disheartening for this student. But the student had a support system in place at the college that helped him through that process. So from my lived experiences as a first-gen community college student to the different roles I have occupied on college campuses, when I advocate for our faculty as the FA president, I do so from an understanding of the complexities that our students go through and the importance of working together across different areas of the college for the betterment of our students. It also takes a lot of resourcefulness and nerve to go from a first-gen college student to obtaining a PhD, and that is the resourcefulness and nerve that I bring to my role as I advocate for the faculty. And that is all I have for you today, so thank you for entertaining my report today.
Well, thank you for sharing your story. I don't know that I knew those things about your history and how you came to be where you are today, and I really appreciate you sharing that. Any questions or comments for, yes, go right ahead, trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. Irene, thank you for that story. I think knowing who we are helps all of us better function together, so I really appreciate knowing that background. I'm particularly struck by something that I have been really passionate about, and I think we can do a lot to improve for families and orienting them to the college process. That is, the majority of people come to college with somebody that needs to help them in their personal life. And in higher ed, we tend to say, no, you're going to do that on your own, and that's for you to figure out. And I really appreciate knowing all the ways that you really trailed, were a trailblazer in creating better two-way communication with families and the whole enrollment process, which is intimidating in itself. I wanted to welcome you, really looking forward to your leadership and hearing more from you each month. Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with trustee Smith Everett. Was it Maricopa Community College in Phoenix?
Yeah.
And you teach history?
Yes, I'm a history professor.
Thanks for participating in the first draft of history. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Mitchell, and then trustee Jennings.
I think this is the first time I've ever heard a college library describe sort of like a speakeasy, so I kind of appreciate that. I found your mother's story of how she figured out how to read very inspiring, and I'm glad you shared your story.
Trustee Jennings.
I just want to say, I really look forward to getting to know you, and thank you for sharing your story, because I think stories, our stories, your stories, they help bring us together, and they help develop the trust that we need when we're in really difficult positions. So thank you for that. And my guess is you're an awesome professor, because you understand students and what challenges they bring with them every day to that classroom with their stories. So thank you.
You know, it's interesting how important diversity of experience can become, and you're really an example of that, because you, having gone through being a first-generation college student, helped Because you, having gone through being a first-generation college student, helps you so much identify with what so many of our students are going through. And I don't think if you had parents who knew the college system and were able to lead you through it, you can ever understand how daunting it is to step foot on a college campus when nobody in your family has ever been there. And for you to be able to empathize with the people who are in those shoes is a tremendous gift to our students. And so, and obviously, this has nothing to do with the Faculty Association, but thank you so much for sharing that experience and for being willing to share your experiences with our students to make their journey just a little bit easier because it can be incredibly overwhelming for folks who have no idea what they're supposed to be doing. So thank you for that and thank you for, thank you for your introduction, as it were.
Thank you very much.
So I know you're sitting down, but trustee Ratan is trying to participate in the meeting while I'm sure she can't keep her speaker open. So I'll share with you her comments. Thank you for sharing. You are what Community College is all about and I can tell you this, I can tell this is personal for you, Irene. Your parents must be so proud. Education changes people, families, and communities, and you are proof of that. You inspire me, looking forward to working together, and I love libraries too. So thank you, trustee Ratan. Okay, that takes us to the Johnson County Education Research Triangle Report and trustee Smith Everett. What do you have for us?
Thank you. If you will indulge me, I was not at the last meeting and that was right on the heels of our April J-Cert meeting, so I'm going to take just a minute to provide a little more fully-flushed report than usual because at our J-Cert meeting, again, we only meet twice a year, October and April, we were presented with an economic impact report that I'm going to just give some brief highlights on. And so I'm going to read bits of it. It's several pages. I will not torture all of us with that, but I will do some highlights. So the J-Cert was created in 2008 and voted by the Johnson County taxpayers as a one-eighth cent sales tax to be an economic spur of a Johnson County Educational Research focus. The investments include creating a new campus for Kansas State University in Olathe, constructing the business, education, science, and technology building on the KU Edwards campus in South Overland Park, and expanding the University-Kansas Clinical Research Center housed in the state-of-the-art building in Fairway. The impact report, as I said, was many pages, so I am going to scroll to the most important part, which is the summary. They did a summary report in 2019 and so this is an updated one on basically is the, are the taxpayers' investment producing what we would expect out of a research triangle in any typical area, including things like jobs, GDP, and income. Overall, the passage, formation, and implementation of J-Cert is estimated to create an average of nearly 550 jobs in the Kansas City area economy. Over the 20-year study period, the present value of the estimated increase in the region's GDP created by J-Cert is expected to be about 1.5 billion. While the increase in personal income is expected to total near 600 million, both are measured in constant $20.22 and assume a 2% inflationary adjusted discount rate. Importantly, these are, the rest of that doesn't matter. All that to say that our purpose on the board is we are oversight because when they created it, they recognized that J-Cert could be a bit of a competition with Johnson County Community College. We want to make sure that we are not offering conflicting degrees from K-State, Olathe, K-State, or KU Edwards and the Kansas Clinical Trial. So they work really hard to make sure they don't overlap with each other and what they offer serves the Johnson County area, including KU is doing some new business development and there's a science job and I forgot what it is, they're creating a new degree. K-State, Olathe is doing the same where they're not trying to duplicate what happens in Manhattan, but also making sure they're not overlapping us and helping to move our students and give them greater opportunity after they leave us. So with that, J-Cert received $2.2 million in sales tax in May 2025 and distributed 758,000 to each of the three university entities. May's sales tax receipts were 6.7% higher than May 2024 and for the past five years, actually, for the May receipts for the last five years. We transferred 48,000 more to each university entity in May and each university has received up to this date 3.5 million, which is 108,000 more than year-to-date for the same period 2024. I just also want to say, because I had a conversation with a fellow parent the other day about just, you know, complaining about the taxes in Johnson County. And I just want to say, being on this board has reminded me that at every juncture, taxpayers in this county have chosen to do things to allow this county to be more prosperous and that adding these sales taxes comes back to reap benefits for all the citizens and residents. And J-Cert seems to be one of those that taxpayers have invested wisely in and reaped the benefits of. So that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for trustee Smith Everett? No, I would just briefly say, so I'll be the one to run us late tonight. I'll just briefly say this. I was on this board in 2008 when J-Cert came to be and, you know, we had a lot of robust dialogue back then and, and nobody knew really whether it was going to work or not. And it's, it's always wonderful when something that we think is going to make a difference really does. And I agree with you, we're always so grateful that the citizens of Johnson County are willing to invest in things that make our community better and this is one of those things. So thank you for your report. Next up is the Kansas Association of Community Colleges Report and trustee Cross.
Just thank you, Madam Chair. The Kansas Association of Community College trustees met in May at Highland Technical Community College, excuse me, Highland Community College's technical campus. All colleges were represented. The University of Kansas presented and held a discussion regarding the KU will transfer up to 75 credit hours into certain programs with some restrictions and is now taking some technical education courses into their health science programs. A presentation was provided from the Kansas Department of Revenue, Property Value Division about property tax in Kansas, trends, and property tax facts. A discussion was held related to the legislative proviso about cash balances on June 30, 2025. A dinner in recognition was held recognizing a community college legislative champion. And the KACC Legislative Committee met to discuss grassroots strategies to improve outreach and education, which was then discussed with the entire group the next morning. A report was given by President Seth Carter from Colby about the president's meeting and also President Amber Nodgin?
Nodgin.
Nodgin, thank you. From Cloud, Amber was announced as the next president of the president's group as well as the president, as well as presented the community college budget request approved for fiscal year 2027, which will be submitted. A discussion was held amongst the group about new innovations being considered in college best practices around community college engagement, communication between the board and the president. It was for colleges to work together for fiscal efficiencies and effectiveness, enrollment trends, budgets for the next year, deferred maintenance, and future training needs. A business meeting was held, which included the approval of the 2026 budget, which was essentially flat from the current year, the approval of the fiscal year 2026 dues, which were also left flat from the fiscal year 2025, and the approval of contracts for advocacy, accounting, and marketing were also approved. There'll be upcoming meetings, Madam Chair, on August 1st and 2nd, 2025, at Arc City at Cali County Community College. I should be able to be there finally. Then there'll be a meeting December 5th and 6th at Garden City Community College and then there's a series of meetings next year scheduled along with the annual luncheon in Topeka. At any rate, we'll meet in Arc City in August and of course, generally, anyone's welcome to attend. I believe trustee Hamill did go to Highland, so I wanted to thank him and just let him have an opportunity to speak if you want to add anything.
We really just focused on communication and building relationships with some people that make decisions for the colleges, in particular, people up in Topeka, kind of like Dick Carter helps us with. There's really a lot of the biggest things we were talking about on this one. So had a great time and Highland was a great host of the event.
It's beautiful. Who was the champion? Do you remember the legislative champion?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
I'll email Heather. Senator Wolf Moore.
Okay.
Was it really?
Yeah.
Okay. I will say Heather Morgan is typically great and she always thanks me for going and I learned something every time I go, so. Madam, that'll, Madam Chair, that'll conclude my report unless there's any questions that I'm probably not qualified to answer.
Thank you for your report. Any questions for either trustee Cross or trustee Hamill about the KACC meeting?
If I may, real quickly, just revisiting an earlier point that trustee Smith Everett outlined, I do appreciate the background and the history. I know much of that, but I appreciate you educating people as to what it is and then that there is the goal or has been, as a governing policy in this state, that people should stay in their lanes and that it's not necessarily efficiency or effectiveness to have all of us doing the same thing. So I appreciate you outlining that as a base policy for why J-Cert was started and why our involvement is so critical. So thank you for your leadership on that board and thank trustee Hamill for going to Highland, so.
All right. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
That takes us to the foundation report and trustee Mitchell, I believe you're going to deliver that this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The MR and Evelyn Hudson Foundation has granted JCCC Foundation a $100,000 gift to support Match Made in Heaven, the Midwest Trust Performing Arts Series, and Kids' Gym. This incredible, incredibly generous support makes the Hudson Foundation a $1 million lifetime donor. Match Made in Heaven, held on May 10th, was a great success. The unique experience gave our donors a way to focus on supporting the museum operations and art education. Save the date for the Third Annual Sips and Scholarships event on June 26th at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. Cindy Green and Tracy Osborne-Oltjen are co-chairs of the event this year. Please share the invitation with friends and family and RSVP by visiting www.jccc.edu/sips. New Hawthorne Bank has agreed to underwrite the event, so all donations will support student scholarships. Town Center is also putting together a special raffle package with $100,000, excuse me, with $1,000 worth of prizes.
Wow!
We're all going.
Shopping for scholarships, which will add a little more fun to the event. You won't want to miss out on our incredible student speaker, Soraya Shazard. Some enchanted evening sponsorships were announced on May 1st. For more information, visit www.jccc.edu/SEE. A few additional articles have been published about our 2025 Johnson County end of the year Jon Stewart. The Independent Magazine will be using Some Enchanted Evening as a cover promo for their May edition. Kudos to our incredible marketing team at JCCC who designed the incredible cover. See below the artwork on the cover. You can probably all see it from here. June 3rd and 5th through 5th, JCCC Foundation hosted the Kansas Advancement Professional Conference that brought 40 advancement professionals from Kansas community and technical colleges together. JCCC Foundation staff were proud to host the conference on our incredible campus and many college staff led informative sessions. JCCC Foundation will be hosting a welcome reception for Dr. Mixa and his wife Deb on August 13th. More details coming soon. Also coming soon, Harvest Dinner will be opening up the site to purchase tickets, tables, and sponsorships. This event will be held at the Rayner Center on August 22nd. This year, the chef is JCC culinary graduate and head chef at Lula Southern Cookhouse in the Crossroads. Fun story, he graduated from the culinary program and his wife got her business degree from here as well. She manages his catering business, a fantastic JCCC success story. Finally, JCCC Foundation announced a new scholarship to support dependents of fallen first responders. There have been several stories on the local news and we are proud to offer this support for families who have given so much for our community. And there is a very lengthy URL that follows that on my report and if anyone's interested in it, I'll be able to send it to you. So that concludes the foundation report.
All right. Thank you so much for your report. Any questions or comments for trustee Mitchell?
If I may.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you for your report, trustee Mitchell. And I'll note that two women today called me and told me that, one, trustee Ingram told me we're splitting the table at Harvest Dinner and two, I think Irene told me we're splitting the table at Some Enchanted Evening. So I just want to say thank you for the people in my life and I sure hope all of you participate also.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Smith Everett.
I guess I do because I just checked my calendar. So we don't have that August date for Dr. Mixa on our calendar, but what, did you say it was?
Let me just a second here. August 13th.
Okay. We can try and add that down. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
All right. Any other questions? Moving right along. That brings us to the committee reports and recommendations and first up is trustee Hamill with the Employee Engagement and Development Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Employee Engagement Development Committee met on Wednesday, June 4th, right here in the boardroom. Christina McGee, Vice President of Human Resources, presented information regarding a change in the conversion rate of sick leave conversion benefit. She explained the current benefit allows employees to convert 40 hours of sick leave to personal leave, up to 40 hours per fiscal year, while maintaining 80 hours of sick leave in their accounts. Ms. McGee explained the new conversion rate requires an employee to have 10 years of full-time service with JCCC and have accrued sick leave of 800 hours or more. If these requirements are met, the employee may convert three eight-hour days or 24 hours of sick leave to one eight-hour day of personal leave for a maximum of one additional personal day per fiscal year. After 15 years of continuous service, an employee can convert three eight-hour days or 24 hours of sick leave to one eight-hour day of personal leave. The maximum allowed per fiscal year becomes two additional personal days versus one. Ms. McGee advised the current conversion procedure reduces productivity, especially at the end of the fiscal year, and is not best practice. Ms. McGee stated that the past productivity costs have been $389,000 for fiscal year '24 with 262 employees converting and $419,000 for fiscal year '25 with 275 employees converting. The recommendation allows the Employee Engagement Development Committee is as follows. It is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed change to the sick leave conversion benefit beginning with fiscal year '26. And I so move.
Motion made by trustee Hamill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I have several questions. So for the 275 employees that took advantage of this benefit this year, will they get to keep it and then moving on, they don't have the opportunity to convert it? Or do they default to what was already in the master agreement and they'll still be able to convert it just at a lower rate? Is that correct understanding?
That is correct. So they'll, the conversion rate will revert back to what it was for really faculty and staff prior to this benefit.
Okay. And then when it says 275 employees, do we have that disaggregated by faculty versus staff?
I don't.
And I apologize for having that as a surprise question. It occurred to me today when an email was sent that I hadn't thought of that part of it.
I can get you that, but I don't know if we, do we have that?
And?
It looks like we have something.
I don't have it this evening, but we can pull that data.
Okay. I guess I'm wanting to know who is more adversely affected, if this is something that more staff are taking advantage of than faculty. I, as I shared with Dr. Korb, I'm hesitant with this. I don't want there to be duplication. Of course, that is part of... Of course, that is part of the problem here, which is we put this into place and to duplicate something in the master agreement. But I'm concerned and sensitive to this feeling like a verb 2.0, as I mentioned to you and we discussed. So, I just wanted to say that publicly. Looking forward to hearing more conversation from my other trustees on this, and maybe my understanding is incorrect, and I'd like to have more clarification, so.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Jennings.
And we talked about this yesterday. My concern is that the timing, it happened really fast, even though people were aware that it was going to change, then things moved forward, and probably people weren't thinking about that. And then, all of a sudden, here we are, and I think it makes it really hard for employees to kind of take that in, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Cross.
Why are we doing this? Because it's not a particularly good practice, or frankly, good business, right?
Right. The reason that we're bringing the recommendation forward is because it's in conflict with the master agreement. It is not a best practice. Only 29% of employees are eligible for it, so it's not, it's not a benefit that everybody on campus takes advantage of because they can't. But the primary reason is, it's in conflict with the master agreement, and it's not a best practice.
As I understand it, you took me through it, Dr. Korb, on Monday. It was not negotiated as part of the master agreement, correct?
It was not.
And that the, it's my knowledge and understanding that the faculty's been aware for more than a year that this was probably going to go away.
We did talk to faculty leadership. Now, I don't know that all faculty were aware, but last year, we did talk to faculty leadership about the conflict with the agreement, and we talked about whether or not to even let it run one more year. We did decide last year to let it run a year, but that last year would be the last year, definitely on the faculty's side, because it's in conflict with the agreement. But we had not had all of those conversations with staff, so staff were not necessarily aware that it was going to go away.
Yeah, I thank you for that, and I just, you have a better command of the facts and the record than I do, so I appreciate you articulating it. I share some of my colleagues' sentiments, I do. I told Dr. Korb, I said, "The businessman in me has a hard time justifying the practice as it's been done." And I know it's probably something that's been done for a while. But as a fiduciary of the taxpayer, like, we need to do what's best, right? And it would be hard to, it'd be hard to defend this in any other situation, because I don't know any company, or too many corporations that would do this, or allow this kind of conversion. So, I appreciate you bringing it forward, and it's not, frankly, fellow trustees, something I'd like the new presidents to deal with. Been around when new presidents have to make difficult decisions, and it doesn't, it doesn't always get them off on the best foot, so I understand your opinions may differ, and vote whichever way your conscience decides, but I'll be supporting the administration. I just wanted to be able to flesh out what I thought, and I think flesh out what the administration thought, and what the reason and logic was in coming to this decision. So, I'm sorry to take the time, Madam Chair, but I just wanted to help explain the administration's position, so.
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
I would just like to add to this, that we've had additional conversation about benefits, and so I'd like to remind everyone that in the bridge plan, there is a provision in there for us to look at benefits going forward. And one of the things that came up at college council, we talked about this, because there was a lot of concern around it, but we talked about, in the bridge plan, we have set up that we're going to do a survey, we're going to look at additional benefits. They recommended that we not just do a survey, but we do listening sessions with employees, which I think is a great idea, to really determine what benefits are our employees most interested in, and what benefits do we really need to recruit and retain quality staff in the future. So, this came about at the same time that Verb went away, so it's kind of mixed in with Verb, but it is not the same type of benefit at all as Verb. And so, we just need to reengage in that conversation and determine, what do our employees want most, the employees that we have now? And so, I don't want people to think like this goes away, and there's no discussion about anything. There is a solid commitment and plan in the bridge plan to take a look at some of these things that have been issues for two or three years. Thank you, Dr. Korb.
Can I circle back with another comment?
Yes, Trustee Smith Everett, go right ahead.
I think, moving forward, again, received an email yesterday that's just making me think about it differently. I think, moving forward, when we talk about benefits, from my standpoint, I would really like us to have a fleshed-out understanding of how benefits affect staff versus faculty. And the reason is, I think our faculty are highly educated, highly involved, very informed, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that they're part of the master agreement and the negotiating, and the FA does a great job at communicating. What the concern I have is, we have staff who are here 12 months out of the year, like I spoke with Jason this evening, doing all the other important work, right? Our library services, our computer services, our counselors, our janitorial staff, our food staff, and I want to make sure that their being, their time is being honored as well. I appreciate you reminding me that it's actually in the master, or it's in the bridge plan for that survey. It's not just like an idea of like, "Yeah, we'll do that," but it's actually a solid strategic element of our bridge plan, because I think we have, we're a special place for a reason. We really honor and respect people and the time they invest here, and I want to make sure that that's reciprocated. And I have been on the board long enough to ride some waves that I haven't been comfortable with, and I keep, keeps coming back that things feel like they're always getting cut, which I understand. I'm in education, retirement has been cut since I started, benefits have been cut since I started, and that's just part of the world we live in. But I think we, JCCC, can be real purposeful, and when I'm making informed decisions, I am going to start asking intentionally about how many faculty versus staff are receiving or participating in these kind of benefit conversations to be better informed. So, that concludes my comments.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you for that. I'll just say briefly, I think it's important to remember that this benefit is reverting back to the way it was just two years ago. This has been something that was in existence for only two years. It precedes your tenure, your tenure here, and your tenure as interim president. And it's my, I guess, opinion that it was one of those things that was not fully vetted at the time it was proposed, because as an employment lawyer, I mean, that's what I do. This is, this is, there's so many things about this practice that just don't make sense. And that the number-one difficulty is, when I became aware that this was in direct conflict with the, with the master agreement, and Dr. Korb and I talked about that a year ago, and the urgency of really getting that rectified. But, but more importantly than that, I think we need to perhaps all kind of stop thinking about things as just like Verb, because that is something that emotes in people, and this has nothing to do with Verb, other than they kind of happened at the same time. And so, nobody likes to lose a benefit, but this is something that was perhaps not well-thought out when it was implemented, and I think we're moving in the right direction to get things back to the way they were before this was done, so I'll just leave it at that. And with that, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
Thank you. Barbara Cooper, Director of Human Resources, presented an update regarding the annual benefit review, an RFP for 2026. A benefits evaluation committee has been formed and is in the process of reviewing bids. The committee expects to have it complete in its review by mid-July. Ms. McGee presented an administrative recommendation to increase staff salaries by 4.5% for fiscal year '26, effective July 1, 2025. The recommendation from the Employee Engagement Development Committee is as follows. It is the recommendation of the Committee, the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to authorize, effective July 1, 2025, a 4.5 salary increase for all non-bargaining units salaried, and full-time and part-time hourly employees employed as of June 30 of 2025, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamill, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
Okay. Ms. McGee shared an update compensation plan with the committee and reviewed the substantial change to the document. The change to the document can be viewed in the board packet. The recommendation of the Employee Engagement and Development Committee is as followed. It is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the compensation plan as presented, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamill, seconded by, I believe, Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
Okay. Ms. McGee advised the committee that the HR leadership has met with staff council in an effort to strengthen communication and collaboration between the groups. The HR leadership team will continue to meet periodically with staff council in order to address their requests and concerns and provide for a continued dialogue. In addition, Ms. McGee said that she is meeting with the Faculty Association representation on a monthly basis in order to enhance communication with the faculty. Rachel Hines reported the committee, to the committee, that the Employee Engagement Survey timeline stated results from the spring survey are expected to be shared with everyone in July or August. Response rate is up at 43%, which is an increase from the last survey. The site's also shared the spring participation numbers for wellness and professional development offerings sponsored by the Employee Engagement Development Department. Numbers continue to increase in those areas. Ms. Cooper presented a time-to-fill position data from last year by work type, business unit, and total number of jobs filled. HR has been able to reduce time to fill by 24% as a result of the hiring, additional talent acquisition staff, and increased engagement with hiring managers. And the meeting adjourned at 12:25 PM. Thank you, Ms. Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Trustee Hamill before we move on? All right. Hearing none, that takes us to the Management and Finance Committee Report, and Trustee Mitchell, you've got a lot for us.
I sure do.
Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 AM on Wednesday, June 4th, in this room. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages 24 through 38 of the board packet. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. Institutional Advancement Performing Arts Update. Stacy McDaniel, Executive Director of Performing Arts, presented an overview of the activities of the performing arts program. She shared a recap of the 2024-25 season and previewed performances scheduled for the upcoming 25-26 season. As a reminder, trustees can receive four tickets per show for up to six shows at the MTC series, so take advantage of it. Capital acquisitions and improvements progress report. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facilities Planning, gave an update on facilities projects from the capital acquisitions and improvements matrix reports through May 31, 2025. Constituent Relationship and Student Case Management Platform. Shelley Allen, Vice President of Student Success and Engagement, presented a proposed new constituent relationship and student case management CRM system and its connection to the Strategic Enrollment Plan. The proposed new system is an AI-based tool designed to manage interactions and relationships with students by offering personalized communication tools, targeted support, and resources to enhance their engagement and success. The funding of the proposed new CRM solution will be provided by the State of Kansas Student Access Initiative's grant. Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendation to present this evening. Review of Update Policies. Rachel Leers, Executive Vice President, Finance and Administrative Services, reviewed the recommendation, recommended modifications to the records retention policy 219.00. The recommended changes clean up the language used in the policy. It is therefore the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modifications to the records retention policy 219.00, as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion about the modifications to the policy? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. You may proceed.
2025 Facilities Master Plan. Rachel Leers, EVP Finance and Administrative Services, and Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services, Facility Planning, presented information on the proposed 2025 Facilities Master Plan. At this time, we have a presentation on the proposed plan, and Ms. Leers will introduce our speakers.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Mitchell. Tonight's presentation is the culmination of nearly seven months of study, with broad participation from faculty, staff, and students across campus. I'd like to thank everyone who attended an open forum or a focus group meeting, and especially the 15 members of our steering committee, who extended high levels of engagement and enthusiasm throughout the planning process. I'd also like to acknowledge Tom Hall, our Associate Vice President for Campus Services and Facilities Planning, for lending his deep expertise and leadership to the plan. The college engaged with BNIM, an accomplished and highly recognized firm with previous experience working with JCCC, as our lead partner in this comprehensive planning effort. And that said, I'd like to introduce James Pfeifer, Josh Harold, and Hannah Gray from BNIM to take us through tonight's presentation, which will summarize at a high level the recommendations included in the plan, and to answer any of your questions.
I have to admit that I'm a little bit intimidated, coming on the heels of two very inspiring presentations earlier from both Jason and Irene. Like Irene, I too love libraries and higher education, and like Jason, we too are going to hopefully make our presentations sing this evening, and I promise, I will not sing also like Jason. So, wanted to say that upfront. This is going to be, you've heard a little bit about the plan in the past, and certainly, this will be a little bit of a briefer presentation and an update for you this evening. So, sincere thanks to the board for your time this evening and commitment to Johnson County Community College on behalf of the team. We really are honored and grateful to be with you here this evening. I'm James Pfeifer, Principal with BNIM, and along with my great colleagues, and in partnership with Rachel Leers and Tom Hall, and so many others here at the college. Again, we're really honored to help, to lead the JCCC Master Plan Update Project. We've been excited to leverage our design and planning expertise to partner with the college, to, and the team, to really help deliver a vision and a plan that's worthy of the incredible work that you all do here on a daily basis. We did, we did feel it was important to begin this evening by acknowledging the impactful work that has taken place at Johnson County Community College, specifically over the past nine years or so. That planning and that hard work has resulted in the adoption of your current Facilities Master Plan in October of '16, and has led to certainly better learning environments, and along with really significant investment of time and treasure. So, planning and design, what we do and what we're really passionate about is really, really collaborative, and most definitely a team sport. We've assembled a really incredible integrated team and partnership to do this important work, and you're going to hear from just a few of them this evening. Josh Harold has been providing design and planning leadership, along with overall pri- along with overall project management. And Hannah Gray, an integral and important member of our design and planning team, are both here with me. And I'm excited for you to hear directly from them here in just a minute. Of course, our team is much larger and has even greater capacity than the folks with you this evening. We've been really excited to really leverage all the strength and expertise of our entire team to do this work and frame the opportunities for meaningful outcomes and measurable returns for the college. We have a long history with and respect for the college, and we're fortunate to partner with you on several of your more impactful capital projects in the recent past. And certainly, this work is no exception. Through that work and through this effort, we have made really great efforts to really reveal and help facilitate the incredible things you all continue to do here at Johnson County. Our focus is really on helping you achieve your goals. And to do this, we really bring strong expertise and high performance, hands-on learning environments, and a human-purposed, collaborative, and integrated approach, with all of this leading to real results and added value for the college. Like JCC, BNIM has served the Kansas City community and the region now for over 50 years by living out our core purpose each and every day. And that core purpose is we design and deliver beautiful, integrated environments to inspire change and enhance the human condition. This collaboration has created a really exciting, forward-looking, yet also very pragmatic and very actionable plan. In the end, you're going to be able to deliver on this plan because of your commitment and your strong mission and vision. And that vision, that mission is to inspire learning to transform and strengthen communities, and a vision to be an innovative leader in equitable student access, learning, and success. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you, James, for introducing us, and thank you, Board of Trustees, for providing the opportunity for us to share more. It's great to be with you again after a month or so of time and continued progress on the effort, so. So first and foremost, as we started the master planning process, it was important for us to develop a planning framework that provides flexible guidance for land use and density for the college, to establish organizing principles for the plan, for the development of the campus, to create standards, methods of prioritization that come out of the plan, and always about feedback through measurement. So James mentioned a little bit about the team, as well as Rachel. Burrow Happold helped with us in terms of utilization data, and Henderson Engineers was our mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers. We had a really strong steering committee led by the executive group with Rachel and Tom. But then you see also listed there, I think it was 15 members, as Rachel shared. And then we broke it down further into focus groups. Focus groups for healthcare and public safety, sustainability, student success, industrial technology, wellness, and athletics. But then beyond that, we also had engagement with students. We had two professional learning days in which we presented as well. And each of those focus groups ranged in quantity of people from five to maybe 15 to 20 people. So we feel like we really had strong engagement with the college. And I'll share a little bit more about that here in a minute. As Rachel shared, we started back just before the beginning of this year in December. So it's been about a seven-month process. We've had generally a month-to-month cadence meeting with the steering committee. We've met almost weekly with Tom and Rachel, the executive team, and almost paired on the monthly met with the focus group. So we've been meeting with you for seven months now, almost weekly to bi-weekly, and really trying to engage as much of your campus as possible and really listen, and then provide our expertise and guidance to inform the master plan. As I share, this is some photos of the student engagement and us presenting at the professional learning days. We think we've engaged at least 300 people or more on your campus through this process. And that's very powerful and very much informs and makes the solutions that we've put forth bespoke to this campus. I think it's important to understand that this is only one piece in the broader strategic plan and puzzle for the college. This works in concert with the Strategic Enrollment Plan, the Strategic Academic Master Plan, and the WCE Master Plan. So we looked at each one of those documents and how our Facilities Master Plan could uphold and help deliver on the goals of those different plans. And then sort of overriding on that is the Strategic Bridge Plan. So how does, how is the work that we're doing with all of these different master plans feed into the Strategic Bridge Plan as the next president comes on board? We describe this really as like a three-legged stool, and you need all of the legs of the stool really to stand together in concert with one another to be successful. I'm showing before you hear the guiding principles from the 2016 Master Plan, which I agree with James, the great successes of the 2016 Master Plan. And we've proposed continuing with those guiding principles from the 2016 Plan. And then the implementable initiatives that were achieved from the 2016 Plan are really exceptional, with the establishment of the Centers of Excellence for CTEC and Fine Arts, the investment in athletics, and just many continued investments and successes that came out of the 2016 Plan.
So we started our process... Sorry, I'm too short. By looking at the overarching organizational strategy from the 2016 Master Plan, and that was the idea of these academic neighborhoods across campus. So campus core, arts, career and technical, and community and wellness. And we heard from both staff and faculty that that was a really successful idea. And moving forward into the 2025 Master Plan, we saw sort of a gap, especially looking at the Strategic Academic Master Plan and how much of a focus on healthcare programs that the college has. So we are proposing in the updated academic neighborhoods for this plan, the addition of a science and healthcare neighborhood. And so that will include the science building, the classroom laboratory building, and an additional proposed new healthcare building that we'll share about in just a second. So similar to the 2016 Master Plans, the proposals that we'll put forth in the deliverable are organized by a series of implementable initiatives that will have very actionable items to move forward with. And we've organized those into two different sort of scales. The first one being building-specific initiatives. So these are tied to specific programs, departments on campus. They have a bigger investment tied to them on the forefront versus the campus-wide initiatives, which have more of a broad impact across campus and are made up with sort of a series of smaller investments that can be done over time. We'll start by going through the building-specific initiatives. So these are what we really organized all of the focus groups around. And we worked with the executive team to identify these initiatives by looking back at the Strategic Academic Master Plans and the enrollment plans to understand what the goals for the college is moving forward. And so from that, we established these four initiatives. Establishing Centers of Excellence for Science, Healthcare, and Public Safety. Expanding the Career and Technical Education facilities. Organizing the Student Center pathways. And improving athletic support spaces. So we'll walk through each of these briefly. At the last board retreat, we sort of shared where, what, and how all of these things were going to happen in a lot of detail. And so this will be a kind of quick recap of that. So the first one is establishing a Center of Excellence for Healthcare. Again, there were a number of objectives in the Strategic Academic Master Plan that highlighted the growth that's projected in the healthcare programs like practical nursing and registered nursing, as well as the establishment of a new surgical technology program. By meeting with a lot of the staff, faculty, and students, as well as working with Burrow Happold on the space utilization analysis, we determined that there is not currently enough space to support the growth of those programs or the facilitation of the new surgical technology program. Again, with the Strategic Academic Master Plan, one of the objectives was to evaluate the success of OHEC, the Olathe Health Education Center, and its location offsite, and consider relocating all of the healthcare programs to the main campus. And so after evaluating a number of things, like the investments needed for some of the growth of those programs, as well as the sort of lack of access to the resources that are located on main campus, we've determined to create a new center to relocate OHEC to main campus and facilitate the growth for all of the healthcare programs.
The next building initiative really focuses on public safety and increases, and really increases investment around the current police academy. And those investments focus primarily on fire science. Fire science currently doesn't have adequate space on campus to support current student needs. There are many deficiencies in terms of use of exterior space for both police, EMS, fire sciences, et cetera. They have overlapping space needs in high bay areas and the gymnasium and other. And there's great opportunity for the EMS program has dedicated space in SCI that they enjoy, but it lacks some dedicated space for unique exam and storage rooms. So we are proposing expansion of the police academy with additional space for fire science and EMS in this plan.
I think it's important to note the opportunities between a new Center of Excellence for Healthcare and Public Safety and the overlapping collaboration that those two programs can have with one another.
So the next, while the investment from the 2016 Plan for the Career and Technology Education Building was a great investment, there's still great demand. And those demands really are focused on commercial electrical labs and residential labs expansion, expansion of the automation, automation engineering space up on Level 2, dedicated space interior for the solar program, for the solar yard. Anything else? So that's the proposed expansion for the CTEC.
The next one is really a renovation of the Student Center. I know in the 2016 Master Plan, there was a large investment on the ground floor of the Student Center with student-focused spaces. But we did hear with student feedback and then working with Shelley Allen's team that there's a lot of wayfinding issues and accessibility issues. And knowing the services that happen in the Student Center in terms of getting students access to financial aid help, enrollment help, counseling services, it's really important for those students to be able to have direct access when they need it to those spaces. And so our proposals are really renovations to the second and third level of the Student Center to make those services really accessible and at the forefront of the student experience, and then put some of the processing side, the non-student-facing employees back in more private spaces. And the last building-specific initiative is improving athletic support spaces. The 2016 Master Plan resulted in a lot of investment in the outdoor fields for student athletes. And we heard how much they love them. What we did hear, though, is the access to the current facilities, like their locker rooms, training and treatment spaces that are currently in the fieldhouse and gym are inaccessible during games because it's such a long walk. They're crossing campus drive, and there's just not enough time. Additionally, they are sharing locker rooms between programs, and a number of student athletes have to vacate their locker rooms to allow visiting teams to use the spaces. So we determine there's not enough spaces, and the quality of those spaces aren't adequately serving the coaches and the current student athletes. So our proposal is a new outdoor athletic center that is sort of laminated on the existing concessions and restroom building that got added when the improvements to the outdoor fields were done. And so that would include locker rooms for more than half of the student athletes currently that participate in outdoor sports. Hospitality spaces for donors, as well as officials when they're coming in for events. And then training and treatment spaces for those athletes. Next, we'll go into the campus-wide initiatives. You might notice that a lot of these are, have continuity from the 2016 Master Plan implementable initiatives. Things like supporting active learning, wayfinding, sustainability. Those are all consistent. And while there's been a lot of investment made following the 2016 Master Plan, I think in the last 10 years, there's also been a lot of innovation in the field and in education facilities. That the proposal and strategies that we will put forth in the deliverable will help the college to continue being a leader in that innovation. The first one is supporting active learning. We know and have seen the incredible amount of investment that you've made in indoor active learning spaces and active learning classrooms. And this Facilities Master Plan proposes to continue that investment indoors, but also put the same amount of attention to the exterior spaces and opportunities with outdoor learning classrooms. So the A and B were studied as a part of a study done by the college for an outdoor amphitheater, and then a classroom for B that we think could tie in really well with a new healthcare neighborhood. And then C is one that we're proposing on the west side of campus on the career technical. And then D was actually one that the staff from the astrology department put forth for an on-ground observatory. The next one is strengthening wayfinding for pedestrians and drivers. We'll continue to look at the different scales and really make recommendations for how best to make wayfinding accessible for visitors and students alike on campus. That includes potentially making a mobile app for navigation, which could help with those who have visual or hearing impairments. And then also, you might notice that all of the implementable initiatives for the building-specific, a lot of the new buildings are displacing surface parking stalls. And so as a part of that proposal, we are suggesting a single-bay garage laminated to the west facade of the fieldhouse. In addition to replacing those displaced stalls, there's an opportunity to address the fieldhouse facade performance issues that we found when we did thermal studies on campus, as well as a potential location for a future west utility plant if that becomes necessary in the future. Also thinking about this idea of sort of like a forward-facing drive for the campus. This really brings the investments that you're making on campus out to the drivers who are experiencing campus and not hiding it behind a sea of surface parking lots.
And to that point, we have also proposed really clarify, from a wayfinding and graphics perspective, clarifying the vehicular traffic and the pedestrian traffic, establishing two clear ring roads. One that we've described as Cavalier Way, and then one that is the remaining ring road. So we think that provides clarity to how you navigate campus. So in everything that we've proposed, it was critical that we look at how your current spaces are utilized. And so Burrow Happold on our team partnered with Jeff Hoyer and looked at your utilization data across the entire campus. And so you're seeing a snippet here of that utilization data. And out of that work, I think we were able to help the college refine the way they use or capture that utilization data so that it is most accurately represented the way your spaces are utilized. So what you might see there, many of the spaces say 100% utilized and 90% utilized, but at the bottom, you see a 34%. That actually was an area that we identified that the way faculty were reserving rooms needed to be adjusted to more accurately represent the utilization. We also understand that the diversity... that the diversity of the student population on this campus have many different needs. And so continued investment in universal design strategies to meet all students where they're at, all their unique individual needs should be continued to be an investment for the college. We worked closely with Jay Antle and his team. I think Johnson County Community College is really a leader on sustainability and energy performance to update basically the goals and metrics for an integrated sustainability approach. And those areas focused on energy, water, ecology, wellness, equity, and resources. And so we've updated the goals as a part of this plan. We looked at, Hannah mentioned some components of the aging infrastructure with the infrared thermography that we did. But we also looked at different studies for MTC, COM, and the Library Services Infrastructure Studies and feel that those should be immediately implemented. I do feel like there should be continued discussion and conversation around the future of the West Park Campus as its leased space. But that we recognize with, if that space is maintained, that it should be representative of the same level of finish and quality as you see here on campus, that there shouldn't be disparity between the two different facilities. So that's the last of the campus-wide infrastructure improvements and the building and neighborhood-specific improvements. So I want to kind of walk through what this means from a financial perspective. And so you see here broken out the building and neighborhood-specific initiatives and the campus-wide initiative. And so we've worked with the executive team to develop a planning or phasing strategy, which you see over on the right, which is also represented in the numbers 1A and 1B. So sort of a first phase is approximately a $47 million investment, which would establish the Science and Healthcare Neighborhood and establish a new Center for Science and Healthcare on campus while delivering on some of the outdoor active learning spaces. Next, in terms of, and the proposal for that is that planning would start in earnest in 2025. I want to also point out to you that these dollars are in today's construction dollars. These are not escalated dollars out to the midpoint of construction based on the complexity of, these are budget-setting numbers is really what these are. These also are construction dollars. These are not total project dollars. And I'll share more about that later on in the presentation. But so you can see then the next phase, planning starting in 2026, represented as 1B items. And that is the West Campus Parking Garage, the infrastructure improvements, improvement to athletic support spaces that we shared, laminating onto the existing facility, the expansion and renovation, partial renovation of CTEC, and then further renovations at the Student Success Center. And that capital investment is around $50 million of construction in today's dollars is what I will reiterate. Two more phases, starting in 2027. You all can read the public safety investments are to be started planning in 2027. And then further addressing the aging campus infrastructure of MTC, the Library Video Services, and COM. And that is a total aggregate of about $42 million in 2027. Lastly, in 2028, picks up the remainder of the items. A number of these also include further studies that are recommended. It will be recommended in our deliverable and has a much smaller dollar amount associated to it at the 9.28 million at the bottom. So in summary, to kind of reiterate even what Hannah suggested is that predominantly the investment is in the building and neighborhood-specific initiatives of around $121 million and then $29.5 million in the campus-wide initiatives. As I shared, these are in construction-dollar costs. These are not in project costs. That, we understand, can vary radically based on the complexity and the scope of the project and how in which those projects are delivered. And so we would suggest between a 1.4 to 1.6 multiplier depending on which project you're looking at. So in today's dollars, the investment that we're discussing is $151 million of construction cost investment with a total project cost of around $210 million in total project cost for today. We think these numbers should be used for budgeting. And as you continue to plan, you should consider the escalation costs once those timelines are further defined and understood. And with that, that's what we've been able to complete with your team. And I appreciate, and if you have any questions, now's the time.
All right. Thanks, guys, for your presentation. That was terrific. I'm just as excited as I was the last time I saw it. But questions or comments? Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you. I'm going to lead off with two. First of all, I really appreciate the presentation and a little more expansion on some of the things I think I had to leave early last time. And so fleshing out some of those, appreciate. The two things are, first for the board and the president, us voting on this does not tie us to anything tonight. It just gives us a plan moving forward. And I just want to clarify, that's all we're voting on tonight. We're not saying, "Starting tomorrow, we're rolling out the yellow hats and the sledgehammers." Number two, you mentioned at the very beginning you have standard methods of prioritization. And at the end, I'm really curious how you sort of give me a high-level understanding of how you go about prioritizing what should be done first, second, and last.
Yeah, I think we really are looking at the greatest impact opportunities. And I think out of the 2016 Plan, the establishment of the neighborhood-specific, right? The emphasis there around the Arts Neighborhood and the Career and Technology Neighborhood, which I think really clarified the planning in the campus. I think critical to this, coming out of this plan, is the establishment of that Science and Healthcare Neighborhood, which will have, I think, the greatest impact to current students off-campus to coming back on to campus and really formalizes that fifth neighborhood. And then I think you see below that, the investments in outdoor active learning spaces. I think, as Hannah shared, the investment in indoor active learning spaces is great, but there's been, there's great opportunity in the exterior experience of campus. The deferred maintenance or aging infrastructure components being addressed by the parking facility and a focus on Western expansion, I think, is really important as it relates to potential future utility needs with a Western Central Plant expansion, addressing the displacement of parking that would be displaced by the Science and Healthcare Building. And that's what starts to establish then the priorities. I don't know, Rachel?
So you do look at sort of the, I guess, maybe better for our team, like the biggest enrollment needs we have where we're just bursting at the seams? And that runs in tandem with the plan and how it was prioritized? Is that correct?
Yeah, we really tried to align with the Academic Master Plan in those areas where Mickey and his folks have identified demand and where we know we have desired new programs to stand up as well as expand current programs.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to confirm, you are correct. Tonight is just the approval of the plan. And so any individual project coming forward would definitely come to the board for review, for approval, for reviewing renderings and things of that nature.
Trustee Mitchell, and then Trustee Hamel.
Just to cut, no questions, a couple of quick comments. One, thank you for hanging out 70 minutes before you got a chance to speak to us. And I'm really looking forward to the Outdoor Observatory. I wish we could prioritize that tomorrow, but it sounds exciting.
Trustee Hamel.
So I don't know who those two questions I got. One of them was, do we have an idea of how many people are impacted by each one of those projects? You know, whether it's students or faculty or staff? Or is it going to be each one of those? I'm kind of curious to know what that's going to be.
I do have that data. Give me a second.
Would it be easier to email that, or is that?
I think we can follow up on that. I mean, we'd have to look at, you know, the individual programs, the academic programs that we're talking about that would be impacted in each of the potential projects.
And then the other thing is, so if we do the Science and Health Building that we're looking at putting in, will anybody be moving from CLB at all? Is that something we need relief for some of those that are becoming great from the SCI building and OHAC? Or the company themselves?
Yeah, that would be motion coming from multiple buildings. So you're talking about consolidating some of the nursing pieces that currently exist on the first floor of CLB and moving a little bit of that work over, pulling together all of the nursing programs and all of our respiratory care pieces from OHAC and moving that over. And then expansion of a couple of the other medical programs here on the main campus. So you're talking about a consolidation of programs from probably three different buildings, but not fully moving, like the virtual hospital would be expanded into a little bit of the space that nursing would be moving out of in that building because you're also now bringing in enough extra nurses that you need virtual hospital space to handle RN and LPN students at the same time. So we would be subsuming some of that space and expanding our virtual hospital and simulation space while taking some of the classroom space, lab space, and offices out to create that.
So the idea would be CLB, you would change it, you'd be adding more hospital on that first floor and removing some of those classrooms there into the Health and Science? Is that, okay.
And we'll flesh out all those details once we hire an architect to get that group onboard and then really start the design and programming phase with the faculty and staff and those.
Just kind of curious because, you know, we just spent a lot of money renovating that. And I know everything you do affects something else, but I just kind of want to know how much we're looking impacting that.
Well, and to be clear, what would be moving was not part of the renovation that we just spent all the money on. Those were other, those were science labs that were created. Those were not medical spaces. We completely did not touch the medical spaces during that renovation.
Thank you. The last thing I got is the math department. We kind of moved that out, kind of spread it around campus in little spots. Is this something that, after opening that space up, we can maybe consolidate math? Or is that something that we've even thought about? Or is that considered in the study?
Perhaps. I mean, again, I think that's a detail that we would flesh out later. But we do, in our space management principles that are outlined in the plan, continue to try to focus on co-locating departments, right? Whether it's math or English, we've made efforts to try to get people together.
Yeah, I'm kind of excited about trying to figure out how to get that back together. And I know some people, the people are as well, so, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and because I've been accused of not paying attention. With respect to athletics, how many athletes do we have on campus? Ballpark?
Right now, ballpark, about 200.
Out of how many students? About 15,000?
Right now, we're at 18, 9.
Okay. And I know I've talked about this with you, Dr. McLeod. I've got a colleague over at Rockhurst, Dr. Bob Jacoby. He believes at Rock that they get access through high schools and essentially extra visits on high school campuses, if I'm saying this correctly. So the investment we have in athletics, that's in part why. That's my understanding, right? We get extra visits at high schools and then...
We get extra visits at high schools, and we actually get those athletes when we are able to rent facilities or host large-scale tournaments or regionals, those sorts of things. We actually get them on our campus as well, which I would say aids in our recruiting since we're winning a lot. Some of our competitors might not like the fact that they get used to coming here and they see what they can do here and what we have here. And they're more interested when we show up to recruit them than some of our...
My daughter played softball this year on campus and St. Thomas Aquinas smoked us, but it was a nice campus, yeah. So we get access and visibility for all those other students. So St. Thomas Aquinas does quite a bit here, right?
Yes.
And then we get all these other, exposure to all these other students. So as we improve our facilities, it is marketing in and of itself.
It is.
And we rent those facilities out to community members and community groups regularly.
I appreciate that. I'm high on caffeine right now. So thank you for reiterating. We can't quantify that, though, can we?
No, it would be hard. I don't, that'd be a question that I'd have to ask our Strategic Communications folks to figure out if there was a way to quantify it. I mean, we can look at the number of individuals that come through because we have, you know, gate receipts, turnstile, and all sorts of things. But it would be difficult to then convert that into a direct apples-to-apples.
This is about you shaking his head, so...
Well, and I think you know this and many people in this room know this. I believe in it. And the normative, we're doing something beyond just merely celebrating the best financed gangs of the 19th century on the sports teams that we cherish. But that is real, right? It's nebulous, but it's a real impact in terms of marketing when we're putting $7.2 million into athletics again.
Yes.
On page 22, if you could go to that, please. And I do not mean to be rude at all, and frankly, it was entertaining. D is astronomy. Is that right?
Astrology.
Astronomy.
Astronomy.
No, I was correcting.
I'm so sorry.
It's got to be, no, 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 no.
You've not had any classes in the Seventh House of Venus. On this campus, but you know.
I was almost out of coffee, and it kind of woke me up, so I appreciate it.
So sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Thank you very much. I just want to clarify that. Page 24, if you could go there, please. I don't know what I'm looking at. Trustee Musel was so good at saying that. I'm a big enough person to say so. So 10A, 2P, that's the usage that's being used right now?
Yes, from 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 p.m.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I was missing that code.
AM, PM.
Okay, so then, I'm so sorry.
Primetime.
I missed it during the committee, and I missed it again here. So thank you, Dr. McLeod. Very good. Then... Wow, it all came together. Thank you.
Yeah, because what they do is they looked at the smaller block, which is our 10 to 2 time period, which we generally call primetime when we're doing scheduling. And then they looked at the expansion of that from 8 to 5 during the normal business day to show where the efficiency, like the usage, is throughout those blocks of the day.
And so then, what exactly does the stuff on the right mean? I'm sorry to be dense, I just...
No, that's all right. These are continued principles for universal design strategies for people with hearing impairments or visual impairments and different things. And that the college should continue to invest in those things, like establish standards for those things.
Yeah, I'm all for this. Just Trustee Smith-Everett thinks I don't pay attention, so I just wanted to let her know that I had some points. So thank you all very much. I support this project.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any other comments or questions? Trustee Hamels.
Thank you. I had another one I thought about. You know, I was a student here 25 years ago, and parking was a major problem out over there by the gym. We've got some expansion of other buildings over there, so I'm sure it's even worse than it was when I was here. So the parking garage, I'm kind of excited about possibly getting that in there. I believe I heard something about the wall needs to be shored up or something. Was that an energy issue? Is that what it is? Can we learn more about that? Yeah, so we used infrared thermography to examine the envelope and the performance of the envelope. And so there's higher than, we also identified several key buildings that have higher energy use. The gymnasium is one of those buildings that has a higher energy use. One of the reasons is because of the envelope deficiencies, but also the use type of that building. And so we think that the parking garage has the opportunity to not only solve some of the parking structure, parking issues, but as it's laminated up against the athletics building, you can address then the envelope issues as well. So you get sort of multiple wins with that project like that. Will we do anything to any of the other sides of the gym that way? Or is it specifically that one side? I mean, you have a lot of air right up there against it, so... Yeah, that is the largest facade that has the most deficiency. I do think you should look at both the north and south facade as a part of that. And I think as that project is further defined in scope and programming, that that will flush itself out. But that should... Do we have any idea how much more is going to change our efficiency and what that's going to do for us? I do not, but we can follow up with some of the energy use data that we had and the worst offenders. And we can provide an updated information if you'd like that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions?
I think I'm good.
Trustee Ratan, who as you know is joining us remotely, had a comment to make, so I'll read that comment. "Love the plan and excited for the next level. This should have been the time to consider bringing back aesthetics." You have no idea what that means, but everybody else in the room probably does. So I just had a couple of comments to make, and the first comment I want to make is, as someone who attended college here in 1986, the very fact that we need neighborhoods is so incredibly exciting. And so you obviously weren't even born then, but we didn't need neighborhoods then. And so it's really exciting to have a campus that has so many opportunities on it that we have to think about how we're going to organize those opportunities. And what a wonderful place to be. And I want to, as I was listening to you, I was thinking about something that our former trustee Bob Drummond used to say whenever we were talking about spending money. And that was, how does this affect teaching and learning in the classroom? And I, and I just want to remind everybody, I guess, this is all about our students. This is about making more opportunities for our students to learn so they can contribute to the economy, more opportunities for students who have challenges, whatever those challenges may be, to be able to actively participate. How cool is that? This is not about just us seeing how much money we can spend because we're in Johnson County and we have lots of money to spend, which I think is a misnomer sometimes. This is about really addressing, helping our students succeed, and then helping those students go on to better our community by filling the needs that we have in our community. And, and that's so cool. And I, you know, I, not everybody is a big supporter of athletics on campus, but we know that for many students, athletics is the means to, for them to get an education. And we've heard from some of those students right here at this podium, and so how terrific is that? So I'll just close. I could go on because this is so exciting for me. I'll echo though what my vice chair said, and that is, we're not spending this money today. This is, this is our, our dream sheet, as it were, and how exciting to be able to dream about those things. So you guys have done a tremendous job. I love listening to things like envelope and laminate, and I'm going to see if I can incorporate some of that into my vocabulary.
Yeah.
He sounds really smart if I get him in the right spot. Yes, Trustee Cross?
I share your enthusiasm. And when my family started going here in 1989, like, we were just excited to have a building to go to. I do want to say, going through the last facilities master plan, there's an element here of marketing in and of a sense that people are asking, what are they doing? And it'll reverberate in the community. And so I appreciate your presentation, our administration's foresight to bring this, and your consideration, fellow trustees. I'm sorry to speak after you. I just...
No, you're good.
Say thank you.
And thank you, all of you, for your presentation. So exciting.
I will share, when we engaged with your students, we invited critiques and feedback, but we got more celebrations in what they're excited about. So it was really exciting to hear all of that.
I bet that's right.
What were some of the students most excited about?
They're really excited about different food options that are coming to campus. There are also, a lot of people wanted to celebrate the fashion merchandising program. A lot of astronomy students. Yeah, athletics was a big thing. They really loved the consolidation of all the student services and the studying options on campus, especially in the library. And at the end of the document that we'll deliver to you, there is a full list of every single comment that we got from students that you can go through.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell, I think you can continue with your report.
Yeah, and with that, it is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the 2025 Facilities Master Plan as presented and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell and seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion?
No, I think Jennings beat me.
Thank you.
She had the wild eyes, so.
All right. We'll second that by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. May I continue?
Center of Grace Facility lease. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services, Facility Planet, reported that the college has leased classroom and office space at the Center of Grace located in Olathe, Kansas since 2004 to conduct Johnson County Adult Education, JCAE, programming through the Workforce Development and Continuing Education Division. The current lease expires July 31, 2025. The college desires to enter into a new lease agreement with the Center of Grace to continue such programming at the current location. The proposed new lease agreement is for one year beginning August 1, 2025 and ending July 31, 2026 with four optional. So therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the College Administration to enter into a real estate lease agreement with Center of Grace located in Olathe, Kansas to conduct Johnson County Adult Education programming. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett?
As many people in this room know, I changed school districts this year and went to work in Olathe. And I will say, this program is so beloved in Olathe. I could not believe the amount of people who have been touched by the Center of Grace JCAE program down there. And somebody told me we'd been leasing it for 30 years, or we'd had an agreement with them for something like 30 years. Is that right?
Since 2004.
How is that 30 years? That's even more painful, geez. So I just wanted to enthusiastically support the fact that we continue to be there because our presence is really important. It's a really critical part to that community, and they feel the love of JCC by having that program there, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Jim Fikeard, Executive Director, Procurement Services, presented 13 recommendations. Madam Chair, I move that I read all of the procurement recommendations and that we consider these as a single omnibus recommendation, recommendation, and that we subsequently vote for these as a bundle. And I so move.
Second. Sorry, second.
Motion to bundle. Motion to bundle by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion?
How many did we say?
Yeah, could you read off the list of motions or recommendations that we're bundling?
It's the constituent relationship management CRM platform, the enterprise identity management services, COM 309 renovation, banking and investment management services, Apple products for fiscal year 26, Dell products for fiscal year 26, steelcase furniture for fiscal year 26, Herman Miller and Knoll furniture for fiscal year 26, signal analyzers and analog signal analy, uh, signal generators, excuse me, masonry repairs, security camera replacement, and SEM SEO digital display, audio and video, video advertising. And earlier today, I counted that, and that was 13.
Network.
Oh, did I skip one?
Yeah.
Still going to stand by my count, but yes, network infrastructure products and software subscriptions.
Sorry. Rach was attacking us.
For the record, it wasn't a trustee.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to bundle a total of 13 recommendations into a single vote. Before we vote on that recommendation, are there any of those 13 that anyone would like to pull out for separate consideration? Hearing none, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion to bundle these 13 recommendations for a single vote, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Six more.
Okay, so now you can make your recommendation.
Start reading.
Start reading. Okay. Constituent Relationship Management CRM platform. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposal from elegant, uh, excuse me, Element 451 for base year of $198,700 and a total expenditure of $886,700 throughout the optional renewal years. Second one, enterprise identity management services. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposal from Fisher International for base year of $163,251 and a total expenditure of $421,651 throughout the optional renewal years. Third one, COM renewal renovation. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposal from Lloyd Brothers in the amount of $482,213 with an additional 10% contingency of $48,221 to allow for a possible unforeseen cost. The total amount of this would be $530,434. Number four, I believe, banking and investment management services. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposal from Commerce Bank for a fiscal year 26 base year and four optional renewal years. Number five, I believe, it is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of College Administration to approve the cooperative purchase from Apple for a total estimated expenditure of $500,000 for fiscal year 26. Number six is Dell products. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the cooperative purchase from Dell for a total estimated expenditure of $1,500,000 for fiscal year 26. Number seven, I guess, steelcase furniture, FY 26. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the cooperative purchase from Circadia for a total estimated expenditure of $300,000 for fiscal year 26. Next one is Herman Miller and Knoll furniture. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of College Administration to approve the cooperative purchase from JA Marshall for a total estimated expenditure of $500,000 for fiscal year 26. Signal analyzers and analog signal generators. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the cooperative purchase from Keysight Technologies for a total estimated expenditure of $319,679 for fiscal year 25. Catch that. Masonary repairs. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the cooperative purchase from MTS Contracting in the amount of $239,400 with an additional 10% contingency of $23,940 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $263,340. Security camera replacement. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the renewal extension for Invision Technology Group for an estimated amount of $200,000 through March of 2026. Network infrastructure products and software subscriptions. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the renewal extension for Sirius for an estimated amount of $1,500,000 through June of 2026. Last but not least, SEM SEO digital display, audio and video advertising. It is the recommendation of the Management Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the one-year renewal option for Rank Fuse for a total amount of $351,120. And I so move on all of those.
Second.
Okay, before the board, is a motion and a second to approve 13 individual recommendations that were just read by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett, then Trustee Hamill.
I just want to say, by my rough math, we're approving multi-million dollars right here in this one foul swoop. We don't take that lightly, and we have vetted this through our committee process, which is why our committee process is so critical to the work we do so that we don't do it now during our board meetings, and that with the exception of the CRM, a lot of this is something we do annually at, or semi-annually at the renewal of our technology that helps our students and our staff operate, faculty and staff operate this college. So I just wanted to say that because as I was adding it up in my head, I thought, okay, we've ticked over to the third million or the second million that we are approving tonight.
All right. Thank you for that, Trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Hamill?
Thank you. I had one question that I didn't get a chance to get answered. On the security cameras, we're doing like a one-year renewal, and, and I can't remember if I'm mixing up things. I know we had a discussion on this even maybe a year ago. Are they, are we replacing that whole system and eventually, is that something that we're talking about, or am I mixing something up?
We have about 700 security cameras on campus in total. This is a replacement for about 271 over the next year. So it's been about 10 years since we did the initial transition to the technology that we have now. And so we're going through the normal replacement cycle, if that makes sense.
Or we're not changing the system eventually or something like that? Did I?
That's not planned at the current time. It's just upgrading technology.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I really wanted to know what the heck we're using analog signal generators for, but I'll pull my questions from the table.
Talking to the people up there.
No, that's what I'm like.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed with your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. That was a, that was a heavy carry tonight, please, for living through the dulcet tone. All right, that takes us to the Student Success Committee report. And Trustee Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Student Success Committee met at 10:10 AM on Wednesday, June 4, 2025. Dr. Dodder, Director of Honors, presented new courses, course modifications, and deactivations and program modifications effective for the 2027 academic year. Sheila Mopin, Associate Vice President of Instruction, presented renewal of credit and workforce development and non-credit education affiliation agreements. These included agreements with St. Luke's and University of Kansas Hospital Authority for healthcare courses. Kelsey Nazar, Counsel, General Counsel, presented the modifications to transcript policy 311.06, records on hold policy 311.07, student records retention and disposal policy 317.00, student code of conduct policy 319.01, and student record privacy policy 319.06. And, Madam Chair, I move that we read all five of the policy modifications, recommendations, and that we consider these as a single recommendation and that we vote on them as a bundle.
Okay, we're going to do another bundle of Ruski?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Trustee Jennings, seconded by Trustee Cross, to bundle in a single motion, five separate recommendations related to revisions made to policies. Any discussion on that motion? Trustee Hamill?
Yeah, we, one of the things I was looking at changing, the free and open assembly, and it was supposed to be in there somewhere else. I was not able to find it. I looked for it and didn't see it. Could somebody help me find that policy that has that?
It's in the expressive activity operating procedure in the...
Okay, the 200 series? Okay. Is it basically the same thing? Is there anything different with that?
It's actually a very long, you know, detailed procedure.
Okay.
Meaning it's not in this set, because this set of series are all the 300s.
Correct. Yeah, so he's referring to a section of the student code of conduct that is, that we just pulled out because it was redundant to the expressive activity operating procedure. And it existed before the expressive activity operating procedure, so we were just shifting to one, essentially.
Pulling out of this because we don't need, got it. So we're just voting on whether we're going to bundle.
The motion before the board right now is just whether we're going to bundle them.
Oh, bundle, okay.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Now then, we will entertain a motion to approve those five recommendations if you'd like to read them for us. Trustee Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is the recommendation of student success and engagement that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modifications to the transcript policy 311.06 as shown subsequently in the board packet. It is the recommendation of the student's success and engagement that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation. accepts the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modifications to the records on hold policy 311.07, as shown subsequently in the board packet. It is the recommendation of the student success and engagement that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modifications to the student records retention and disposal policy 317.00, as shown subsequently in the board packet. It is the recommendation of the student success and engagement that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modifications to the student code of conduct policy 319.01, as shown subsequently in the board packet. And lastly, it is the recommendation of the student success and engagement that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the College Administration to approve modification to the student record privacy policy 319.06, as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move on all five of the recommendations.
Motion by Trustee Jennings, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. The motion before the board is to approve the five recommendations as read by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Did you get your question answered?
Yeah, thank you.
Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Motion carries six to zero. You may continue with your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Clayton, Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness, presented on the Higher Learning Commission Reaffirmation Process. He highlighted the timeline and milestones for the new, for the next few years. John discussed the four reaffirmation criterion and the JCC employees leading each team. Jackie Edson, Director of the National Higher Education Benchmarking Institute, presented information about the Lumina Foundation Grant. She discussed the barriers and burdens they discovered and how they were able to pivot the approach to work with tribal colleges and universities, TCU. Part of the new approach included working with two well-known Native American scholars to develop a white paper to be published later this year, and she said she would share with us. Dr. Edson then shared an extremely informative video on how the benchmarking data has helped four colleges. She thanked the grant's office for answering her questions and helping secure the grant, the video team for the wonderful video, and the board and administration for their continued support. The Student Success and Engagement Committee will meet again on August 6th, 2025, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Trustee Jennings before we move on? All right. That takes us to the President's Recommendation for Action, and first up is the Treasurer's Report, and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you. The board packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ended April 30th of 2025. The general funds unencumbered cash balance was $136 million as of April 30th of 2025. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended April 2025, subject to audit, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue.
That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. That brings us to Dr. Judy Corb and the monthly report to the board.
Okay. Well, we made it to my last report to the board.
Oh, so say you.
Oh, thanks. So this would be my third last board meeting. Not my third to last, but my third last board meeting. So anyway, my report tonight is probably a little bit more personal in nature, but before I go into those remarks, I just wanted to let you know that you're going to receive some general information in an email. So you'll find the enrollment reports that we usually get. You'll find a letter from Haskell Indian University that we referenced in the report that Stacy gave in the success committee, or in the committee meetings, the management committee. So I'll send you that. And then also, we have, you know, we've done a lot of work with Cabinet. We have the purpose of Cabinet that we have put together and kind of what we had agreed on. You'll get a copy of that. In addition to that, you referenced an economic impact report from J-Cert. Well, I had asked us about doing an impact report for Johnson County Community College, and what I found out when I asked that is that we had one that was completed in November of 2023. And so I was unaware of that, and I don't know that you got copies of that. So you have a fact sheet at your place, but emailed to you, you will get the entire report. So there's probably more opportunity to discuss that later after you've had a chance to really look at it. But one fun fact is Johnson County Community College's economic impact is also 1.5 billion. So it's pretty impressive, and so it's, it's kind of exciting when you read the numbers and you think about how our mission impacts the area. So anyway, that information will come to you in an email. Okay, so I, I just remember 18 months ago, and when I sat down at the board table, like in a new spot, we were in the old, you know, place over there, and I thought, what have I done? And how did I end up back here? What you don't know is as administrators, when we think we're going to leave, we count down board meetings. So here, here we were again, but, so you know that I was hesitant to take on this role as interim president, but now I want to thank you for the opportunity that you have given me and the trust that you placed in me to see Johnson County Community College through this transition time. Time's gone quickly, and I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with all of you, and of course, the amazing faculty and staff, as well as the students that we serve. I recently looked back on the expectations that you set for me way back when I started in this role to make sure that I had addressed everything, and I've only got two more weeks. And so I looked back through my notes, and I thought, okay, a lot has happened. So with the help of all of the Cabinet members and really everyone else on campus, I'm just going to mention a few things that we've accomplished over the last 18 months. So early on, some of this stuff is going to sound like so far away, like, like it seems like a long ways in the past, but we phased out the contract with Fine Line. We implemented the Culpeper Study. I only did half of what you asked me to do there because you told me that you wanted me to implement Culpeper and make sure everybody liked it. And so I did the first part of that. The second part, not so much, I think, but we hired Christina McGee as VP HR, and we've made great progress in stabilizing the HR department. We negotiated a three-year faculty contract. We've had a lot of different leadership development opportunities with Cabinet. We took action to strengthen shared governance and build trust within the culture. We conducted a successful presidential search. We made progress on guided pathways, and we have steadily increasing enrollment trend, and we also have retention numbers that are up, and it's all a result of all of that work that people are doing in those areas. We opened the CDL driving range. We responded to new federal guidelines and mandates and navigated other legislative changes and other requirements from the state at the state level. Made some tough and unpopular decision, but decisions, but I would have to say the toughest decision was closing the Inclusion and Belonging Office. That was a tough one. We completed the Strategic Bridge Plan and connected to that the Facilities Master Plan. Some Enchanted Evening set a record in fundraising for student scholarship. We did develop the First Responders Scholarship, and we are very close, I think, to having an agreement with Panasonic. So those are just some of the things that were on my list, and so I think that we've been busy, but it's impossible to mention, like, everything that has been accomplished or to actually name everybody who, who did that, because I did not do that all. But I do appreciate the support that I had from everyone, you around this table, as well as everyone out there and across campus, in carrying out the expectations that you set for me, but also in carrying out the mission of college. So this role has given me a chance to learn, grow, solve problems, reconnect with colleagues, and meet new ones, contribute to transforming the lives of students. I think you might have overachieved just a tad on the number of problems that you gave me to solve, but that was a great opportunity. Thank you for that. So I will tell you what one of my favorite faculty members told me at the end of a training session that I facilitated, that he had reluctantly attended. He said, well, it wasn't terrible. So I just want to thank you for everything. It wasn't terrible. And that concludes my report.
I'm sure we're now going to have some comments. So all right, let's just go around the dais, and we'll start, Trustee Smith Everett, with you.
I'd like to actually have that to end, if you don't mind.
Okay, let's start on the other end, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there's so many things to say, and many things going through my mind right now, and half to three quarters of the people wouldn't believe me, even if I said some of the things that happened over the last two or three years. I can't thank you enough for what you've done, and all of your administration here, because it really was not an easy time here 18 months ago. Trustee Ingram and I, and Mr. Sport, we lived through what really wasn't an easy time. So I'm just going to say thank you and then leave it at that, and the confidence, the process, the competence that you delivered. You're underselling yourself when you say it wasn't terrible. It was far superior to that, and I thank you.
Trustee Mitchell.
Well, I just want to say thank you, and I, and not to diminish anything Lee said, and I'm sure Val will agree with me, but it hasn't been that difficult for us new people. It's been a relatively smooth 18. I mean, we've had to deal with a couple of challenging issues, for sure, but, and I think that you and many of the other people in this room were a big part of why that is, including other board members. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Jennings.
Well, Judy, I just want to say I hold you in awe. Your leadership, the skill that you have, I've learned so much, and the openness and amazing communication that has built trust at this institution. And when Greg and I first stepped on board, I think, in my opinion, there was a lot of pockets and a lot of distrust across campus from the different pockets, and you have this amazing ability to pull people together, and they listen. So thank you for stepping into this role, and it's been an honor.
Thank you.
Trustee Hamel.
I'll say, when we first were discussing, you know, trying to figure out who to get to come in as interim president, and I've told you this before, it's no shock, and you know my nature, so when everybody seemed pretty sure Judy's the right person for it, of course, I have questions and concerns, and I have to dig into everything, and it's just the way I am. And I'm so glad that you came in and did this. There's a lot of things I could say, and you've heard a lot of them too, and a lot of them have been said and will continue to say, but also you definitely loved the place a lot better than you found it, and I'm really appreciative of your time here and everything you've done for the college throughout your lifetime of being here and being involved, and it's clearly, very clear how much you love the college and your dedication to it, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Can I jump in right there? Because one of my favorite quotes, while serving as trustee, it's actually a lot from Trustee Hamel, I don't want to give him that much credit, but one time he says to me, he goes, why is Judy Corb the answer to every problem we have? I just add to it. Yeah.
Trustee Smith Everett, I get to go last as the chair. That's my prerogative.
I know you do. I recently had a family member go through a procedure that's really knocked them down, and I was thinking about it this week, and this being your last board meeting, in that there's a lot of parallels to where we were 18 months ago and the shape we were in, both on this board as well as internally in this institution. And your name rose to the top as someone that could just get us through. If that's all we needed, we could just get us through to the next president. What we got instead was somebody who cares for this place, maybe more than the combined people at this dais, who listens, who is an exceptional communicator, who I have learned how to communicate to multiple layers and multiple levels, from reflective, caring, also decisive when needed, proactive, proactive, proactive. I cannot reiterate that enough. And you brought, as you mentioned before, you've been here a few times. You brought such critical institutional knowledge when it was necessary for us to make pivots from where we had been. We came through a pretty difficult period as a board, and we needed clarity and direction from ourselves as much as the president. And when I think of what we are passing on to Dr. Miska, I'll never get his name right, I'm going to botch it for the first year, there is no better person than you to fill this role in these 18 months and put us in a position that I am so very proud of. I have never, and I have been part of this college for 15 years before I was even on this board with my father here, heard so many positive things about one individual, because we have a lot of complaints on campus sometimes, but you are universally beloved for a reason, and that is because you are so intentional about what you do with each person on this campus, and I thank you, both personally, as well as professionally, as well as institutionally, for what you've done to repair us and put us in the position we are today.
I know how much you love this, so we're not done yet.
You said it's only seven people.
I have some comments. I have some comments from Trustee Ratan, and I'll just read them to you. Dr. Corb, I hadn't met you, but when you came back for your first interim role, everyone celebrated, so I knew you were awesome, and that was solidified with the couple of one-on-ones we had. Then when you came back as interim president, the heavens opened up and sang, righteously. You lead with rare qualities, integrity, intelligence, and care. I have learned from you, and I appreciate the results you've brought to JCC. Your love for the college is clear and shows in everything you do. There are many intangible results that you delivered not included in the list you shared. Thanks is not enough, and I hope our paths continue to cross. So I'm glad to hear it wasn't terrible, because it's been my privilege to consider you my friend for many years. And when I came to you 18 months ago and called in major chits to ask you to come fill this role, I was terrified that you'd hate me for it forever, so I'm glad to hear that's not the case. And I'll just say this, you mentioned that you went back and reviewed the expectations we gave you. I will tell you that I've not once looked at the expectations we gave you, because there was never a doubt in my mind on any day that you weren't fulfilling and exceeding all of our expectations. You came into this college at a time when we had lost our way. That's my perspective. We'd lost our, our trust. We'd lost our way, and we placed in you the trust to get that back, and you did that and so much more. And I, I think you're probably not going to come back again, but.
I think that.
But I know that we'll continue to, our paths will continue to cross professionally and personally, and I just can't tell you enough how wonderful it's been to, to have you fill this role and how grateful we are.
I don't know how to turn it off.
The entire campus community is grateful, and we know that, or at least most of us know that it was a sacrifice for you, I mean, to stop what you were doing, to come out of semi-retirement, to come back here and take this on, and what a legacy you've left. You know, when our students come here, many of them have dreams, and we tell all of our students, as we've all told our children, dream big. You did that when you were just a youngster, and you came here and you took on a job that you were qualified for at the time, which was fairly low on the proverbial totem pole, and through your hard work and just ability to collaborate, you've shown all of us what dream big really means, and what a contribution you can make to the community, to so many people by dreaming big and living that dream. And I'll stop there, because I know that you hate this, and so I get that, but gosh, gosh, we're going to miss you, and what a great way to leave things for Dr. Tony Mixa to come in here and be our next president, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
All right. That takes us to our first executive session.
First?
First of two, sorry. And so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding negotiation of a contract, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session will last for 30 minutes. It will begin at 7:35 PM and end at 8:05 PM, at which time, open session will resume at this same location. We would like to invite Dr. Judy Korb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Dr. Gurbashon Singh, Rachel Leers, and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. We will begin our executive session in the next room at 7:35. Okay, it is 8:05, we have returned from executive session, and no action was taken. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into a second executive session, this time to discuss a personnel matter regarding non-elected personnel for the purpose of protecting the privacy interests of the personnel to be discussed. The executive session will last for 30 minutes, beginning at 8:07 and ending at 8:37 PM, at which time, open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite Dr. Judy Korb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Dr. Gurbashon Singh, Christina McGee, and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five, six.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. All right, it is 8:37 PM, we've returned from executive session, and no action was taken. That brings us to the new business portion of our agenda, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add the discussion of the Panasonic Program Agreement to the agenda under new business. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Trustee Cross.
Trustee Cross. The motion on the table is to add the discussion of the Panasonic Program Agreement to the agenda under new business. Do we have any discussion as to whether or not to add that item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. So under new business, we're adding a discussion of the Panasonic program, and with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the program agreement with Panasonic Energy Corporation of North America, as has been presented to the board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Smith Everett.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Jennings.
I didn't even try.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, that brings us to the old business portion of the agenda. I'm not aware of any old business. And so next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for the board to take up in a single motion matters of a fairly routine nature, and I will start by asking if there is any item from the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull before we move to approve it. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Mitchell, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and I believe that brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, we are adjourned.